To offer our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, please say it if you'd like.
Good evening. Let us have an invocation. We come this evening, Lord, just to give you thanks, thanking you for this day. Lord, we come as we come to conduct the town's business. I pray that you continue to be with us and help us to make the right decision for this great town of Spring Lake. Be with our leaders, help them to understand that this is about the people, help them to be good leaders. We pray for your protection. We ask you, Lord God, to be with our first responders, be with the employees, and be with this great town. In the Lord Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We will move on to additions and deletions. Can y'all even be okay? It finally sounds like the mics aren't really loud. We usually get a lot of feedback of static, so it sounds, it actually sounds clear, so good. All right, we'll move on to agenda item three additions and deletions. Alden Plasios.
Mayor would like to add discussion of town meeting structure.
And we will add that as agenda item F and everything else will fall after. Under new business, agenda item F. Any other additions or deletions? I'll now entertain a motion for approval. Alden McCubbin.
I make the motion that we approve the agenda with the corrections.
Mayor present. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll now entertain motion for approval of consent items, the draft minutes for 27 February work session meeting, appearance sustainability committee applications for Caleb Vlad and Maggie Youssef. Alden Plasios, since you're still on.
So moved.
Is there a second? Alden McCubbin?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so your light came on?
Yes.
Okay. Your discussion first.
So first, for Mr. Caleb Vlad, he has the date, I believe, as his date of birth, so I think we might need to get that corrected. At the very top on the ramp. And second, I know is that he doesn't live in the, uh, rural city, I think he's, um, he's on Riverside Circle. And I believe the other person is too. Was there a number of people that would be from the influence area?
So in the committee bylaws, there is no, as far as the municipal influence area, there's no regulation on that. Now, as far as out of town, out of the municipal influence area, there are now, as part of the agenda, last meeting, we approved two non, two business owners, non-residents. And so Ms. Youssef would be the second business owner, non-resident, and that would, these two applicants would fill that committee. So all seven seats now will be filled.
Okay, thank you. Alden Plasios?
Yeah, I think Ms. Youssef is here, is that correct? No?
I don't see her, she was supposed to be, but.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to thank those two for volunteering to serve this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so what we can do, I believe we can approve this, we can just make sure that you reach back out and get the proper date or, and change that, or put the date on there and change.
His signature date is on there, by the way. July, this application sat since July while we had the town clerk transition. So Ms. Carly did reach out to him and he did say he was still interested in.
Okay, so let's change the date over there. Yes, to approve it with the update. Alden McCubbin.
So I make a motion that we approve these, um, the consent items with the corrections.
Is there a second? Mayor present.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We did not have anyone sign up for public comments, so we will move on to our first presentation, what I'm super excited about. Carvers Creek State Parks, Park Ranger Ms. Colleen Bowers is here, so for all of you, I'm so tired of hearing people say, "You guys have a state park?" Yes, we do, and we're gonna make sure we put it in front of you guys, so you guys know about what's happening in Spring Lake as well. Thank you for coming, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you so much.
What's your official title? What do we call you? Do we call you Park Ranger Bowers?
So I got the park superintendent position in 2019, so I'm now the park superintendent.
Congratulations!
So I really just wanted to go over general information about the park, and then, of course, if you have any questions, please feel free. So, of course, Carvers Creek State Park, we do have two accesses. The first one is Long Valley Farm Access, which is the one that's in Spring Lake. You see the address there and the contact information. Long Valley Farm is 1,420 acres. We first opened this access to the public in September 9th of 2013. We currently have two trails. We have the Rockefeller Loop Trail, which is two miles, it starts at the office and ends at the office. And then just off of the Rockefeller Loop Trail, we have the Cypress Point Loop Trail, which kind of goes along the water and then back to the Rockefeller Loop Trail. We do have the Rockefeller Winter Estate on the property. We've got a hundred acre mill pond and then a Cypress swamp, leading on the backside of the mill pond all the way into Fort Bragg. We are currently in the process of trying to get a renovation project off the ground. The plan is to turn the Rockefeller House into our visitor center. Along with that, we'll be paving the dirt road all the way up to the Rockefeller House. Currently, we have interim development. And right now, we have just like a little contact station, a dirt road, and a parking lot, and we can park maybe 70 cars in that parking space. But the development that is coming is paving the road all the way up to the Rockefeller House, putting in a parking lot that will be able to have at least 80 cars, including buses for field trips. The, uh, the two main wings of the house will be classroom or education areas. They can also be used as rentable spaces. The main hallway area will be an exhibit hall, which will display the history of the, of the property, as well as the overhill property, as much as possible. The upstairs will just be offices, and the reason for that, the main reason for that is, is so that we don't have to change the house, put an elevator in, those type of things, since it is, the house was built in 1938. So we just don't want to have to mess with the view of the house in that aspect. But the upstairs is just bedrooms, so we're just gonna turn that into our office space there. There is also plans to renovate the pavilion that is there, and the pavilion will be a picnic pavilion. It can also be a rentable space as well for gatherings. So basically, the, the Long Valley Farm has a very rich history, and so I'll go through it really quick. But this is kind of our main focus when people come to Long Valley to visit the park. We do focus on the history. We did have the McDermid family who owned the property there between the 17 and 1800s. They were using the property for naval stores, so that was turpentine and lumber, which was the, why the creation of the mill pond happened. Daniel McDermid put the dam in originally, created the mill pond, and then the pavilion that you see up in the picture there, that was the old sawmill. So they would float those large timbers right up to that sawmill and then cut them up, and then they were able to ship them off where they needed to be. From there, the property did get broken up and smaller and smaller, and went through many different hands. I like to focus on the people who actually affected Long Valley Farm. So I do like to jump to Robert Wall Christian. He's actually the one who gave it its name, Long Valley Farm, and the name has stuck over the years. And when he did own the property, it was at its 1,420 acres, so it really hasn't changed since 1914 in that aspect. We do have a couple of structures on the property, like the spring house that you see in the bottom of the screen there. That was original to Mr. Christian when he owned the property, because there was no running water in his house, so they did use a spring house. But he experimented with artificial fertilizers and crop rotation right there at, at Long Valley, so very significant farmer. Then in 1927, Percy Rockefeller owned the property, as well as the Overhills Estate, which we all know, the Overhills is now owned by Fort Bragg. But Percy did own Long Valley for a short period of time. Long Valley was mainly used for hunting trips, so they would actually bring their horses and their hunting dogs over to Long Valley, and they would do their hunting. On these hunting trips, they would bring his nephew, James Stillman Rockefeller, and so that's why we like to call it our, his hunting cabin back there. So in 1937, James Stillman Rockefeller got the property, and from there, he started the construction of the house that is currently still there, and it was completed in May of 1938. Now, another reason why I like to call it a hunting cabin is because James Stillman Rockefeller was coming from Greenwich, Connecticut, where his home there, when he passed away in 2004, sold for $22.4 million. It had something like 12 marbled bathrooms in it. This house doesn't even have 12 rooms in it. So it really was, it really was his hunting cabin back in the woods, even though it is two stories over 6,000 square feet and is a very large house. It wasn't what, you know, it wasn't his main house. So hunting cabin, winter estate, whichever one you like. Then in 2004, Mr. Rockefeller passed away, and he willed the property to the Nature Conservancy. Now, the Nature Conservancy, in the will, Mr. Rockefeller stated that they could either maintain it as a working farm, because Mr. Rockefeller was farming tobacco and cattle and things like that, or they could let it go back to nature. He did not want it to become developed. So, of course, the Nature Conservancy not into farming, they immediately started on the renovations of the fields and things out there. So they planted all longleaf pine and all of the old tobacco fields. The cattle pasture is now a warm season grass meadow, and they planted all of that there, and we maintain it through prescribed burning once a year. They also redid the, the, they basically put in a braided stream across the front, running kind of parallel to East Manchester. And that was because the original stream that ran through there was irrigated for farming. So the Nature Conservancy actually got the ecosystem enhancement project involved, and they were able to put that, that stream restoration in, and it is doing very well. And then in 2010, they basically done all the restoration that they could, and that's when it was given to the park, and of course, we immediately started trying to get it ready for the public. I was hired as the first park ranger in June of 2010. So we had the property, we got the property in January of 2010. They hired the superintendent, a maintenance mechanic, and a park ranger. So our Sand Hills Access. So this one is a bit bigger, and we really don't have any type of infrastructure over there, other than a bathroom, a parking lot, and trails. Now, that, we do have the address there for the property, and McCloskey Road does dead end right into the park. We do have a ranger duty phone, so that way, if there's any, anything that ever happens after hours, basically after 5 o'clock, somebody is carrying that duty phone, so that way, if there's an emergency, if there's a lost person, or an injury, or anything like that, a ranger can be contacted. The acreage currently of the Sand Hills Access is 3,462 acres. That was just upped in December. We got another 377 acres across from Johnson Farm Road, so we are still expanding the Sand Hills. And the staff that I have is me, and I have, I have two rangers, one's on maternity leave, so really I have one ranger right now, and I have two maintenance mechanics and a few seasonals. So that is the staff that I'm running almost 5,000 acres with. So bear with us, we're doing our best. We did open the Sand Hills Access to the public on May 4th in 2019, so right after I got the superintendent position, that was like my first big thing that I did, was open the Sand Hills. There are seven trails over there. The Long Leaf Pine Trail is four miles one way, and all other trails kind of spur off of the Long Leaf Pine Trail. It is a multi-use, so a little bit different than Long Valley. Long Valley is just for hiking and bicycles, Sand Hills Access, hikers, bicyclists, and horseback riding. So we do offer that at our Sand Hills Access. So why Carvers Creek State Park? I get this question a lot, because people come to the Long Valley Farm Access, and the creek there is Jump and Run Creek, so everybody wants to know why Carvers Creek State Park. Well, the state started getting our first parcel of property in 2005, and that was, that did have Carvers Creek in that parcel. So we have been working on this state park since 2005. We just didn't have any infrastructure or any staff until 2010. So when they decided the name, they said, "Oh, well, we got this parcel of property, it has Carvers Creek on it, so we're gonna name it Carvers Creek State Park." So again, and another, again, why Carvers Creek? Why are we preserving these 5,000 acres? What's the point? And the real point is this longleaf pine ecosystem. So we used to have about 90 million acres of longleaf pine in the Southeast United States. Through turpentine, through lumber, and through development, we have dwindled that down to about 4 million acres, so from 90 million to 4 million. So along with that, you've got your, your red cockaded woodpecker, which is a federally endangered species.
I just saw one.
You did? That's exciting.
Right red eye was screaming. I'm sorry, I'm a bird watcher.
That's good. Well, you can go to the Sand Hills and you can see these guys right by the parking lot, because, of course, they, they decided to, to pu, push back our parking lot project because a new male had created a nest right by the parking lot, so we had to wait for him to find his mate and nest and everything before we could build our parking lot. So if you go over to the Sand Hills, they're, they're all banded with white bands. You can see him, like he's got himself a whole little cluster there now, right there at the, at the beginning of the Sand Hills trails. So, um, longleaf pine ecosystem, there are a ton of rare species. It is fire adapted. So I am a burn boss, and we do try to burn at least 1,500 acres annually, basically about a third of the park every year, trying to maintain this ecosystem here. And so, just a brief overview, why it needs fire and why it's so adapted to fire. So if you'll notice the seedling at the top, you can actually see the sand. So it needs bare mineral soil to even germinate. And those summer burns that would have happened naturally in the summer through lightning strikes would have cleared, cleared all of that to bare mineral soil and then allow those seeds to germinate. Then the next step is the, the, basically the wire stage, and it has a tight bundle of pine needles around its growing tip that help prevent it from getting burnt. So all of those needles around it get burnt, but the growing tip stays protected. Then, once the tree hits, hits water, it can grow three to four feet in a year. And that is so it can shoot up above those flames, and so that way it doesn't have to protect that growing tip anymore. And then, of course, the next two pictures, one is a mature and one is an old growth. So mature, just basically, they're starting to get their pine cones, but this doesn't even happen until they're 30 to 40 years old. And then old growth, they do live to be 500 years old. Anywhere after 80 is when your red cockaded woodpecker will start to home in these trees. So again, with the decline in the ecosystem, you have the decline in the animals and other plants that use this ecosystem, so that's why Carvers Creek State Park. We are here to protect all of these. So why do we use prescribed fire? Again, this whole ecosystem thrives on fire. You've got pixie moss, which is a tiny, tiny little flower, that little white flower up in the top. And if there is just pine needles upon pine needles upon pine needles covering that up, it won't bloom. And it is another rare and endangered species, and it is also the host to the pixie moth, so without the pixie moss, you won't have the pixie moth. You've got the Sand Hill, Sand Hills Fire Lily, St. Francis Seder, the Wiregrass. Wiregrass, we've been doing some really cool things with Wiregrass lately, so it will not even go, it will not even have viable seed if it has not been burned in the summer months, so it's that specific. So we burn it in the summer, and then we actually have a machine that can go through and collect the seed, and we can use this for more restoration. You've got the Bachmann Sparrow down at the bottom that actually builds its nest in the Wiregrass. So without the Wiregrass, you do not have the Bachmann Sparrow. Without fire, you don't have the Wiregrass. We've got the Pine Bear and Tree Frog, the Pine Snake, the Fox Whirl, and of course, the Red Cockaded Woodpecker. All of these are only found in Sand Hills ecosystems, and it is because of the prescribed fire that we do for the Long Leaf Pine ecosystem. So that's just a really quick overview of the park, and so if you guys have any questions, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about the park.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. I, this is, I love nature, and you know how much I love this park. Thank you for not telling them a secret garden. Which is another one of my, absolutely. I, I'm a nature buff. I love outside, so thank you for doing this. And I know you guys do a lot of projects or events out there. Please make sure that you send them to Carly so that we can share what's happening at the park from the town.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, comments from the board? Thank you. Mayor present.
I just have one. This would be a great, a great field trip for my school. Do you have any information on you now, any campus or anything?
I do, so just a, just, just kind of an overview with the, with the field trips, which is why I didn't bring them up until the Rockefeller House project. So we have one bathroom right now, and so we can't do, most of our field trips have been with the local daycares, because they're smaller groups. We can't handle large school groups yet. But once we can get that Rockefeller House up and going, we're, you know, we're planning on having the parking lot, you know, for, for buses and having the restroom facilities and indoor facilities if we need it for, for that field trip. Currently, with our interim development, we just can't handle hundreds of kids. We can handle about 40 to 60 is, is where, where our max is right now. But yes, we are planning for the future, but I can give you information on that, and it's also on our website, too. nc parks.gov, www.nc parks.gov. All of our stuff's on there.
Anything else from the board? Thank you so much. We will now move on to Ms. Fontager Johnson for Community Financial Empowerment.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, and I'm gonna say family, because everybody in the community is family. I'm gonna discuss a few things, and I'm gonna try not to take up too much time, but I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the nonprofit itself, which is called FACS Financial Awareness Counseling and Teaching Services. It's a nonprofit 501(c)(3). A little bit about Spring Lake and the community program offers, as well as some financial empowerment tips and grant opportunities for the city of Spring Lake as well. But before I do that, I would like to express gratitude just for being here first, and also to talk a little bit about how I got here, as far as the nonprofit goes and who I am. My background is in finance, banking, and mental health, and so I spent 15 years in the financial industry, working from companies from HSBC, Wells Fargo, Wachovia, Navy Federal, as assistant manager, trainer, instructor, educator. I also worked in collections and also field collections, bankruptcy, where I literally went to people's houses and shook them down looking for money. But I digress, that's not something that I would love doing, so I definitely stepped back from that area. That wasn't for me, it wasn't my calling. But my passion and purpose is definitely financial literacy and mental fitness and the impact that it has on our community specifically. I was also a teacher, and so I taught in the city of Virginia Beach, six through 12, and alt, oh, excuse me, alternative ed, as well as adult learning. And when I got to Raleigh, North Carolina, I also taught in middle school and high school in Cumberland County as well. So I have 15 years in the financial industry, as well as being an educator for over eight years. I also work for Mindful Schools, which is a mindfulness community for educators by educators, and so we teach mindfulness techniques to our teachers, as well as giving them techniques for our students as well. I know in Cumberland County, they've implemented calm corners, and so it really intertwines with what that is and what it looks like, not only for our teachers and educators, for the community, the parents, and the students. The nonprofit was a vision of mine. I realized what my passion and purpose was, because I've been doing this work for a while, and I said that growing up in the projects in New York in a single fam, family household, and not having the resources, as well as not having a conversation around financial literacy, what that means, savings, budgeting, my credit report. I didn't even know what a credit report was until I went to go get my first card, you know, and so once I started realizing those things, like you need a credit card, you need a credit score, what's a credit score? How much am I supposed to have? What do I start out with? And so because those conversations wasn't had in the household, I said, "Something has to be done," and I know that people are doing it all over the place. However, what makes, what stands facts apart in this area from others that are offering it is our mission is to meet people where they are. And so instead of coming to a facility, we, we're mobile, and so we will come to you, whether or not that's pulling up in a van in the community and just having a conversation and giving them the information and resources that they need, or maybe partnering with a rec center or just having a space to hold, space to have connection and build community in that way, also offering one-on-one services. And so as of right now, I believe she says it's only me. However, in the past, I also have volunteers, and so that's something that would be sought as well. People volunteering to also facilitate classes, offer one-on-one services as it relates to financial literacy and mental health. As far as FACS goes, it's a free offering to the public, and so most of our, what we do stems from grant opportunities, and that's one of the things that I'm here for today, to kind of talk about a few of the grant offerings that are available specifically for this city. And when I originally started the nonprofit, I took my savings and started it and continued it for a few years, and now I have private resources, as well as grant opportunities that continues to build on this. But the work is so important, the, what we need as a community is so important when it comes to educating ourselves and creating generational wealth for our children and our children's children, that the work is gonna continue with people that also want the same thing for the community. As far as volunteer work, one of the programs that I'm going to discuss a little bit is called Bank On, and so I'll discuss that a little bit more, but I used to volunteer with the Bank On program in Hampton Roads in Virginia Beach for some years, and I've always wanted to continue that, and so one of the things is bringing it into this area to be able to support underbanked or unbanked residents of the area, and, you know, having, I'm gonna go into, I'm gonna go into a little more. go into a little more. So as far as the Spring Lake community programs, FACS offers, again, a full range of mobile service, services for individuals that are sometimes facing transportation issues. So if they can't get to a location, we wanna bring the information to them, as well as services for financial literacy, mental fitness, and workplace readiness skills. And what that looks like as far as the workplace readiness skills, the job skills. So career readiness, whether or not that's helping them with their resume, completing an application, what's necessary for those things, or how to dress for a job interview, and how to have a conversation. Our goals are to improve the overall well-being for the person. And, and we know that when it comes to financial literacy, sometimes that's one of the biggest impacts in relationships and families, and that also coincides with our mental health. And so what we do is we combine the two. So not only are we offering financial literacy classes to teach people how to budget, how to save, how to read your credit report, what does it mean to invest, how to save for your retirement, trust, and things of that nature. We're doing more than that, because with your mental fitness, sometimes we get stressed, we get overwhelmed, right? We feel anxiety and things like, and then all of the feelings and emotions that we have. And so it's important to figure out some techniques and some ways to be able to move through those feelings and processes. Not that they're not valid, but sometimes these, these other things come into play when it brings down on our mental health. And our mental health is important, just as well as our financial literacy ability and our generational wealth is as well. And one of the papers that I gave you for Financial Empowerment Tips, it really talks about during COVID-19, how the importance of safe and affordable banking was important because a lot of people were receiving government funds as well as PPP loans and everything else. And some people didn't have bank accounts or had to wait a longer period of time, and they didn't have benefits to secure resources or make payments remotely or directly deposit safely. And so with Bank On Certified Accounts, which is one of the grant, grant opportunities that I'm seeking, we branch out to various banks and credit unions that support this effort, and they offer accounts that don't have overdraft fees. They offer accounts that have little to no fee to open the account, and all you need is your name, social security number, date of birth. And so these accounts are specific for people that are, so that they're made affordable and that they can have control over their money. And so it lists a few of the banks that we currently work with as far as Bank On goes, so BBNT, which is now Truist, Bank of America, Dollar Bank, and then I'm also partnering with a few other North Carolina credit unions in the area that I spoke to last week. So to that, I think it's the one with the red on the top. And then the Bank On Movement, the mainstream financials accounts matter. So Bank On, as far as classroom, having a classroom for having these conversations and working through the various offerings. They offer cost savings, asset building, financial stability, and public safety. And we work with a lot of national and regional banks and credit unions. And the grant opportunity is open now. And so again, this is a free opportunity because the grant is being written by FACS, and hopefully the city of Spring Lake will support that. And just by supporting, saying that we will apply for this grant and will be able to use it in this area to support the community and growth and stability. As far as the support letter, I actually wrote one as a sample, just in case you didn't wanna put in the legwork because it's already there. And again, this program is free. Anything that FACS does to nonprofit, the money's come from grant opportunities that is written by us in order to continue to deliver this, these classes, these one-on-ones, these financial programs, the mental fitness programs as well, all for free in the community. So I just wanna say again that it's free. All you have to do is decide whether or not it's something that you wanna support and that we can bring it into the community, bring it to the people, and then also have other people that are interested in financial literacy or mental health or already working in the field to volunteer for supporting the masses, so to supporting the families, supporting the community. There's also a grant opportunity available for Summer Job Connection. What that looks like is far age range is from fourteen to twenty-four. If there's a summer program in Spring Lake that you already offer, and you're teaching children, or we can do the same on how to get a job, maintain a job, and what that looks like, we also wanna start them young as far as what does it look like to save some money, right? What does it look like to have an account? Because once you turn about thirteen or fourteen, most bank account, most banks allow you to have a bank account. And so how do, how do you save? How much money do I put towards my savings before I just blow all of my money on Fortnite, right? So all of those things are important. And so we're teaching them, so there's an opportunity there for the Summer Job Connection, which will incorporate financial literacy skills, and then will also implement some mental fitness. And when I talk about mental fitness, I've said that a little bit already, but mental fitness as far as mindfulness and just being aware and in the present moment when we're here right now, instead of focusing on the past or the future. And so offering techniques to help with those things. I mentioned earlier stressors, being overwhelmed, anxiety, sad, angry, because we're human and we're supposed to feel into these emotions, and that's important that we do that and not push them aside in a way. And I know, once upon a time, I used to, even with my kids, I have four boys, somebody used to cry, and I'm like, what are you crying for? Why are you crying? Stop crying. Because I felt like in those moments before, that their feelings were invalid, because why are you crying if you don't have an excuse? However, we should be able to feel into the feelings that we have, and we shouldn't say those things to our kids, because then we're offering a little bit of trauma to how they experience their feelings, right? So if I question what your feelings are, then later on in life, you may even question whether or not those feelings are valid. And so as we start getting older and we start learning different ways that we can talk to our children or each other, and also practice mindfulness in a way that's supportive, being nonjudgmental in the moment, feeling into whatever it is without judgment, and then practicing different things. So whether or not that's using our senses or our bodies. And so I know one of the things that I tend to do often for myself, and I coach people as well, is like rubbing your fingertips together, maybe your hands, maybe noticing what you see in front of you, listening to sounds, music. If you're in a car wash, going through it just for a minute and watching the suds, or looking at the colors in the shower, noticing how warm the water is, or maybe how cold the temperature when you're washing dishes. There's so many ways that we already are being mindful, but we're not naming it as such, or maybe utilizing the space in those moments to do it. And so again, we're incorporating mindfulness techniques and financial literacy for the better of our health, for the better of our people, for the better of our community and our families when it comes to what FACS does and how we wanna partner with the city of Spring Lake. And so I also put in there on the last page, it's a three-page proposal, also for the city personnel. And I know that the city is an amazing community of people that come together on a daily basis with a common goal, right? But then you also have a lot of stressors and a lot of things impacting you on a daily basis. And so one of the things that I would love to also incorporate is a team building, team program for the city. And so it looks, it reads into for those last three pages on what that looks like, and it would incorporate sessions for financial literacy, mental fitness, and team building. And so the impact of that is to build camaraderie with each other. The intention is to really offer some empowerment, informing bonds, I'm sure that you already have, but building on top of that, as well as drawing a mind and being creative in what you do and showing up as you are and your authentic self, and, you know, loving on and supporting each other a little more, and to bring more resilience, productivity, and emotional ease to your daily activities as you do as a city, as you continue to grow. So I implemented some things in there, if it's something of interest, and it just kind of lists what that would look like, when it would start, and it can be a pilot program to see if it's something that would be beneficial for you, even if it was a foot shorter period of time. And so I put that information in there as well. All right, I feel like I've been talking way too long. But if, does anybody have any questions as far as the nonprofit, as far, as far as the programs, the grant opportunities? And again, they're free. All I have to do is write the grant up and just require your support to implement it within the city.
Thank you so much. Aunt Joanne Cooper?
Thank you so much. We, well, I do know there are like several places that you could meet, like FTCC has free space that you can just sign up for. I know the library has meeting rooms, the resource center. So there, you know, even, not even with the, you know, town facilities, all those facilities are available. And I, I don't have a problem with the grant being written. It's, you know, and I know our people could use those, those resources. So I appreciate you coming before us with that. Mindfulness is really important, and I don't think a lot of people understand how good it is for you, for your mental health. So I appreciate that part as well.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming. And it's so funny, I just left Virginia Beach this weekend.
Thank you.
And financial literacy can definitely cause stress.
Yes.
So coupling them together. Will definitely probably save some marriage.
Right.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to say thank you.
Awesome. Again, you can't have enough financial literacy, so I will discuss this more with the board about supporting, about us, you know, collectively coming together to possibly support your organization so that you can bring these resources back to the community, because again, there's never enough financial literacy. So thank you again for your presentation, and we'll definitely be in touch.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We like financial literacy, especially the part about the, the presentation for the town and being able to come in and offer our employees. And we've heard it come from the dais multiple times that we wanna make sure that we're not only taking care of our residents, but that we're providing added benefit for our employees, so to have an additional package specifically prepared for the financial betterment of our employees. And team building, that is, that's phenomenal. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to Fontager, about a very serious topic, but very funny. But please come, we have Pimwheel Garden Planning Child Advocacy Center, Ms. Faith Bomer. Please say it on the mic for us.
So I'm actually Roberta Humphries. I'm the executive director at the Child Advocacy Center. So I just wanna thank you all for having us come tonight and be able to present some information, and we're so thrilled that you'll be doing a pimwheel planting this year for the Child Advocacy Center in Spring Lake in the township, and so we're really thrilled about that. Faith Bomer is gonna do a presentation for you to give you some more information about the CAC and the work we do, and then I'm here if anybody has any questions afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberta.
It's good seeing you, too.
Thanks. So thank you again for allowing us to come. Again, my name is Faith Bomer, and I'm with the Child Advocacy Center. And I'm just gonna run through some slides, and some I'll go a little faster with, but if you have questions, you know, throw your hand up and we'll try to answer them. So the CAC has been around, this is actually our thirtieth year. We just celebrated thirty years in February that we've been in the community of Cumberland County, and we're gonna have a celebration in September about that, so we're looking forward to that. But we are a place of healing and hope. So let me tell you a little bit about what that means. So our purpose is to alleviate the trauma children experience once a disclosure of sexual abuse or serious physical abuse occurs by creating a community of collaborating advocates. So we have reached out to people throughout the community that are our partners, partnering agencies that we work with. So one of those is gonna be the Spring Lake Police Department. That's one of our partnering agencies. Next is our vision. Our vision is a community where children live in safe and nurturing environments, free from sexual and physical abuse. I think all of us as adults would agree that that's what we want our children to have, is a place that's free from abuse, where they can be kids, where they can play and enjoy what a child should enjoy. Next is our mission. We collaborate with community partners to respond to and prevent child abuse. So again, that's where all of our different partnering agencies, from the different law enforcements in the community, to Department of Social Services, Fort Bragg is a part of that, we have several that we work with specifically. Just some highlights I wanna hit next. The CAC, as I said, is celebrating thirty years. So we were founded in nineteen ninety-three by a group of concerned local professionals that were seeking to coordinate services to provide to victims of child abuse into their families. So what they were wanting to do was to provide a safe and friendly atmosphere where children could come to a place where they just had to tell their story once. They didn't have to go around to law enforcement, DSS, school, et cetera, but to one place where they could come once an allegation had been made. The CAC is a safe and child-friendly environment where professionals from community agencies come together to interview, investigate, and provide support. So when an interview happens, the detective that's connected to that case, if there's a detective connective comes, along with DSS, if DSS is involved, they're gonna be there, they're gonna observe the interview, actually in a room across the hall from where the interview happens. They watch it through a computer screen as it's actually taking place. The CAC reduces the number of interviews of child victims of abuse by providing trained professionals to conduct the forensic interviews. So when folks come and bring these children to us, we have on staff two persons currently that are trained forensic interviewers. That means they went to a training where they became certified to know how to do this. So they know how to ask a child child-friendly questions, open-ended questions, so that you're not feeding information to a child, and they can relate to you what actually happened to them. The CAC also provides mental health therapy sessions to child victims of abuse, both individual and group. So this is something newer. Probably in the last seven to eight years, I think, we've had therapy coming to the CAC. And currently, we have one person that is on contract with the Child Advocacy Center that provides therapy approximately around forty hours a week. She does two girls groups that meet on Wednesdays. One Wednesday is gonna be a middle school group, and then the opposite Wednesday will be a high school group of girls. And then on Mondays every other week, a boys group meets. And she have volunteers that are actually, some professionals in the community as well, councils, et cetera, that come in and that support her and help her with those groups. And then, of course, she does individual therapy, talking with the victim that's been abused, but also with the nonoffending caregiver. The CAC coordinates the multidisciplinary team case review. So once a child has come through the CAC, we have case reviews pretty much every other Friday, where these professionals that I've just described come together to make sure that everything in their power is being put to action. So that if there is something that a child needs, if they need clothes for school, if they need food, if they need counseling, they're making sure that those things are getting in place for that child and that family. The CAC also provides continuing education to professionals who serve child abuse victims and education for the public. So that's my role as the prevention coordinator. I work with the community to come out, just like I am tonight, to places like this, but to book clubs, to churches, to civic clubs, and talk about what we do and what we're trying to alleviate in our community here in Cumberland County. So what I wanna do next is just give you a little snippet of what happens in the life of the CAC. So this is a short video I'm gonna play for you to watch. And I don't know if I can...
Just, just press the button.
That button?
Okay.
In nineteen ninety-three, a major change occurred in Cumberland County regarding the treatment of children... In nineteen ninety-three, a major change occurred in Cumberland County regarding the treatment of children who've been victims of severe physical or sexual abuse. Before nineteen ninety-three, this is a typical example of how things worked. A child told her teacher that she was molested by a family member. The teacher took the child to the guidance counselor or school social worker where the child told her story again. The principal was advised of the allegation and a report was made to the Department of Social Services, who in turn contacted law enforcement. The child was interviewed by another social worker, either at school or worse, in the home where the abuse may have taken place. Or the child was taken to the law enforcement center where she would have to tell the story to a detective in a setting that was not child-friendly and where there were people walking around with guns. In other words, children had to tell their story again and again to the school personnel, detectives, doctors, child protective service workers, psychologists, and on and on. With every retelling of their experiences, children were revictimized by the very system that was supposed to protect them. So in nineteen ninety-three, a small group of concerned professionals and community leaders met to create a better, more sensitive way to deal with children who had been physically or sexually abused. The Child Advocacy Center was created as a safe, child-friendly place where children could come to be interviewed once about the trauma. A place where more than nineteen agencies came together with one goal in mind, to provide help and justice for abused children and their non-offending family members. Since that time, the Child Advocacy Center has been serving the needs of thousands of children in Cumberland County who are victims of sexual abuse and severe physical abuse. Now, when a child has a terrible truth to tell, there is a place of comfort to do so. A highly-trained forensic interviewer creates a safe and supportive environment where the young victim can talk about his or her trauma one-on-one. Meanwhile, other members of the multidisciplinary team may watch on video monitors from another room. In this way, the child feels more comfortable and less intimidated about telling the scary truth. The interview is also recorded, and that recording may be used in court as evidence. Sometimes specially-trained and certified therapy dogs are used to help put the children and their caregivers at ease. When children come to the CAC for the first time, they are in crisis. These dogs are able to decrease the anxiety children suffer during their first visit to the center in a way that no person can. Telling the truth about abuse is difficult for these children. More often than not, they are talking about a family member or family friend who has committed the abuse. Sometimes the child has even been threatened by the abuser. The child's emotions are very fragile. The forensic interviewer uses a variety of techniques and items, including anatomically correct dolls, to allow children to talk freely about what happened to them. After the interview, as a form of comfort and support, each child can choose a soft and snuggly handmade blanket or a stuffed animal they can take with them. It is hoped that these things will remind the child of the calm and safety they felt while at the center and the courage they exhibited by telling the truth. Many times, families are left reeling after a child discloses abuse. The Child Advocacy Center provides a victim-family advocate to address these needs. The victim-family advocate is in place to direct families to other services and resources that will help them through the process. In addition, the advocate also helps children and caregivers understand and prepare for what happens next during investigations, prosecutions, and treatment. After the forensic interview, the multidisciplinary team meets to review the case. Specifics are discussed and next steps are planned in detail. Because all nineteen agencies are working together, cases may be handled faster, which allows victims and families to begin the healing process earlier. This proven method of handling severe physical and sexual abuse has saved this community thousands of dollars each year. It is estimated that more than one thousand dollars per case is saved because of the efficiency and effectiveness of the multidisciplinary process made possible through the Child Advocacy Center. Not only does the center help victims and their caregivers, the CAC is involved in the prevention of child physical and sexual abuse. Darkness to Light Stewards of Children Training educates parents, grandparents, other caregivers, and professionals about the prevalence and consequences of child sexual abuse and the steps they can take to prevent, recognize, and react responsibly when abuse is suspected. The CAC also provides continuing education to professionals who work with child abuse victims to help them keep up to date on new methods and techniques. Public events are held throughout the year to keep the issue of child abuse and prevention in the spotlight. Fundraisers provide an opportunity to educate the public about the issue and raise money to help combat this social ill. You can be a part of this good work. Volunteers are always needed for a variety of projects and activities. If you have a talent and want to make a difference in the life of a child, there is a place for you at the CAC. If you are able to help financially support the work of the Child Advocacy Center, donations of all sizes are gratefully accepted. As a nonprofit, the CAC relies on the generous support of the community to provide these much-needed services. No matter how you want to support the Child Advocacy Center, you can rest assured that your gift of time or money is helping our community's most vulnerable citizens. The Child Advocacy Center has helped change the lives of thousands of young people who have passed through these doors. And although a terrible crime has been committed against them, it does not have to define their lives. If our children are our future, do we not owe it to them to support and nurture them in their darkest hour? Be part of the light. Protect children. Stop abuse. Support the Child Advocacy Center.
Okay, so that gives you just a little overview um of what happens from a child coming in to uh volunteers and what they do, um trainings, all of that kind of stuff. And I'm gonna touch a little bit more on some of that. So the the next slide uh just kind of gives you a year in review from our last fiscal year. You can see that we had eight hundred and eight referrals. Um it's not in here, but there was over five hundred that actually came into the center um that had a forensic interview. And you can see the breakdown of sexual abuse with four twenty-seven, physical abuse at three thirty-six. But I also want you to look at that bottom right um box where it says fourteen seventy. One thousand four hundred and seventy persons were able to receive um child abuse training and awareness um during last fiscal year. Um so that is actually a little bit down. Um COVID years have kind of knocked us down a little bit, but we're building back up. Um but it's still important to note that we have been out there training um in the community. I want to add another piece of something in our community that is um connected to us a little bit, but it's uh human trafficking. That's a question I get a lot. Um we do have human trafficking that happens here in our community. And um as of twenty nineteen, there is a specific uh human trafficking court that's here in our county and it's the only one in the state. There are others throughout the the country, but it's the only one in the state. Judge Tony King actually brought it here. It's called Worth Court. We overcome recidivism through healing. And you can see it was organized in January twenty nineteen, first court held in September of twenty nineteen. Um but it offers interventions and access to resources to address basic survival needs such as life coping and change of behavior opportunities. Um now, when um the next year after it came about, twenty twenty hit, and it didn't have the numbers and the opportunities that it had hoped to because of COVID. Um but you can see here last year, this is through their fiscal year last year, uh you can see the numbers of juveniles and adults, adults are higher. Um but sometimes children are not always seen, they're kind of kept hidden back um for obvious reasons of not wanting to get caught and that kind of thing. But you can see the breakdown there um as well. Then I want to touch a little bit on some child abuse prevention, just to tell you what's available. Um I think when I met with Mayor Anthony a few, a month or so back, we talked about some prevention things that we could offer and we could offer to you guys. The first one is called um stewards of children training. This is to educate parents, grandparents, anyone um about how to recognize, prevent, and react responsibly um to child sexual abuse. One of the things that I think is uh significant about this training is that when you go through the training with ninety percent of your staff, whether it's your town council, whether it's your city employees, or whether it's a parking wreck or Carver's Creek, wherever, um you can obtain what's called a partner and prevention seal. And then you can display that on your website, on your um glass doors, letting people know that you have gone through the training and know how to recognize and report um child abuse. The next one is called recognizing and reporting child abuse. This one's a little bit more geared for um professionals. We have one that we can do that's um a little bit more basic um for the community at large, but it's how to recognize the signs of child abuse and how to report um those suspicions of child abuse um or disclosure or discovery, actually. The last one I'm gonna tell you about is called Chosen. This is a documentary about domestic minor sex trafficking. Um and it's for professionals, but it's also for community members. It's about a twenty-minute documentary, and then we follow up with a discussion um with that. So that's the the other uh piece. But that's the prevention um that we we offer. Uh one of the things I didn't mention is in November, we do what's called nineteen days of prevention, and we try to go out to our, some of our youngest citizens and teach them about body safety. So we have gone into childcare centers and taken body safety classes and talked about um, you know, touch and um the, one of the main books we use is called Some Parts Are Not For Sharing. And it's some little fish that um swim around and talk about some parts are not for sharing. So that's a another piece of what we do. Um so obviously, there's a lot of ways that folks can help us as far as supporting us because we are also a nonprofit in the community. Um and uh I've listed a few, but we've got tribute murals. Uh I'll show you pictures of those on the next slide, I believe. Uh we can have donations. Um and then, of course, if anyone's interested, they can always visit our website. But these are the murals that we have. And so uh folks have uh purchased those stars or those leaves in honor and memory of professionals or even their children, or children that have passed away, or people that have passed away, ever how they choose to do it. So that's another way that folks can um support us as well. Um I've mentioned this basically, but uh we could always um, you know, are always looking for support, looking for ways that people can help us. Uh this is what I was wanting to get to particularly. Um pinwheels are gonna be popping up starting, actually starting March thirtieth, if you're gonna start seeing them. Um we've got six major pinwheel plantings across the community. The first one is gonna be in Hope Mills at their uh town hall. And then uh the next day, we're gonna do one at Festival Park, which is gonna be the main one that we're gonna be um uh at. And then the uh next one will be Monday, I believe I'm getting this in the right order. It's gonna be at Federal Tech. And then Tuesday, there are two, one will be at Memphis University and one will be at uh Central Services with the school system. And then the next one is, guess where?
Spring Lake.
Spring Lake. Um so that one is gonna be April fifth at twelve o'clock, and that's gonna be at Walgreens at that fort. I don't know what you call it, but that little juncture. Um and so it's gonna be planted up in the grass area, correct?
Yes ma'am.
I'm saying that right? Okay, so um I hope to see you there. Uh we're gonna have four hundred pinwheels and invitations are gonna be delivered to me tomorrow. Um so they'll be going out in the mail, so all of you should receive one of those. But please share it. Um I sent it to um Carly last week, and so she's got it where it can be shared on your social media. Um but please share and invite people to come.
We only had um one request for that particular event. Our superhero of a town manager has requested a giant pinwheel.
A giant pinwheel?
A giant pinwheel.
Well, I'm not sure what to do about that. Unless you, we or you can find someone to build a wooden giant pinwheel, maybe?
If we, if I find a giant pinwheel, I'll definitely give it to you guys after we do it for our
Do it, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, but if you can find one, absolutely, that would be um, that'd be great, so. Um and you will have uh yard signs up, we'll go with it. They're gonna look a little different than those did, we've updated them um this year. Um then I wanted to share too that our uh spring fundraiser, the federal ultimate lip sync showdown um will be on May sixth, and we're still looking for acts. So if the town council would like to put an act together, we'll take that. Um I'm sure Roberta will be right there waiting for you um for that to to come about, so.
We can even give you some song suggestions.
Yeah. And we've got a person that'll mesh your songs together, we've got it all covered, we just need to add.
I'm game, I'm, yeah, we just gotta get the rest of the work.
Okay, all right, you you work on it, okay? All right, I wanted to share too that this year, um we, through a couple of different committees that I work with at the CAC, we decided to come up with a theme for the year. So our theme for twenty twenty-three is be their voice. Um and and there are significant months that we have certain emphasis. So like January is human trafficking month, so that was uh be their voice, speak up. I mean, I'm sorry, stop human trafficking, speak up. April that's coming up is be their voice, help them soar. And I have to explain that picture a little bit. At our office, our counselor, when um she finishes therapy, the, you know, series of therapy sessions they may have, at the end of that, she has them to color a, just a coloring sheet of a butterfly. And then they take that butterfly and they cut it out, and they go and hang it in the counseling waiting room um on a tree. And she talks to them perhaps about, you know, where they've been, maybe the reason why brought them there, how they've accomplished things, what they're doing. But she lets them know that now they're about to soar, they're about to fly off, and they're gonna be successful. And so that's pretty significant to us um when we think about child abuse. So that's why the the little girl with the butterflies. And then June is Internet Safety Awareness Month, and that month is gonna be uh don't be quick to click. And we're in the process of building up some stuff for June. Uh the possibility we might have a documentary here called Sextortion, uh The Hidden Pandemic. So that may be something um that'll be coming. Um and then in um, and I I forgot to change this again, but that shouldn't say April, it should say November is our nineteen days of prevention, and that's gonna be harvest awareness, grow greatness. And that's again, like when we go out to the preschools um with that information. And then uh like all nonprofits, uh we have volunteer opportunities. So here you see somebody on the far left that's uh actually doing a storytime. Um this was a an outdoor event in the middle. And then last year, Lowe's actually did a service day and came and planted um kind of re-beautified our front area, and so that was them doing that. Um and then we also have opportunity for group projects. If people are interested in making no-sew fleece blankets, the uh tie blankets, those are things that are given to our kids. There's comfort bags, there's CAC supplies. I won't go into all of that, you can read that, I know you have it as well. Um and then there's specific things that folks can do in the office as well. And then finally, I just want to show you this. Um we want all children to live in a stable, loving, and stimulating environment, wherever they're at. At their home, at their school, at the ballpark, um on a field trip, wherever in the community. Um this picture was actually drawn by a child. Um he was in, or who, I don't know who it was, girl, boy, but whoever it was, um drew this on a chalkboard that was in the waiting room where they were waiting, or maybe had just come out of the um interview. And that's what we found when the family left. Um so that reminds us how important it is um to protect our children and for us as the adults to be their voice, for us to speak up and do what's needed um to make sure that they are safe. Uh they have our um addresses, physical, and mailing. If you ever wanted to come and have a tour of the CAC, we'd love to show you around and just let you see the insides and what that looks like and what happens there. Meet the staff. Um and then that's my information if you wanted to reach out to me as well. Um but I wanted to encourage you too, that if you have a chance, just go to our website. We have lots of resources, lots of things that you might find beneficial um, you know, about the CAC, the community, um Internet SAD, books, just suggest for children to read, um all of that kind of stuff. So any questions for me?
Any questions?
Again, thank you so much for the work that you are doing to protect our children. It is critically important. Um and I know I owe you some time, it's coming, I promise it's coming.
Okay, all right, we'll talk. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much, we really do appreciate you letting us come, and we're excited to see them pinwheels.
Wait till I find this giant one.
Okay, I'm looking for that.
Thank you again, thank you, Ms. Roberta.
All right, we are now finished with our presentations, we will move on to new business. Um and I just had a uh new business agenda item eight A. Um this would be really quick, just wanted to let you guys know that Spring Lake uh seventy-second birthday is coming up April ninth. Um and we are looking to put together a very small presentation or celebration um with, you know, residents, business owners. with, you know, residents, business owners, and anyone who wants to come and just, you know, celebrate the history of our town. So our staff is currently working together with other business owners and other employees to put together just a small presentation. So I just wanted to keep you guys aware of what's happening. Take a look on the website and on our social media pages for more information. All right. We'll move on to 8B, and that is Discussion of Our Mission/Vision Statement and Strategic Planning Session. So on February eighteenth, the Board, Spring Lake Board of Alderwitz, our town manager and clerk were present for our second strategic planning session. This is a continuation of the strategic planning session we did last September. And I just wanted to make sure that we put this before the public before the board started to deliberate on how we wanted to make this permanent. We wanted to make sure that we gave the community a chance to be involved. So I'm presenting this to you now for information only, so that you can, as the community, go through and see what your, your board is planning for this town. We want your input. We want to, like I said before, we begin to plan, we want your input. So we're looking to bring this back before the community, again, at our upcoming work session where we can really pick this thing apart, open it up for public comments, where you can, as, as the community, come in and give us your feedback. We are your representation. We work for you. It's not the other way around. And so we don't want to make decisions without your input. We don't want to start to plan the trajectory of this town without your input. Again, we work for you. This is our community. So please, 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 read through our mission statement, read through the, the project, or potential mission and vision statements, read through our strategic plan. We came up with a five-year goal, or five, five-year plan for the town, beginning with things as small as, as, you know, orchestrated cleanups to as far as, you know, major infrastructure repairs. I do want to, I did want to highlight one major fact from working with, we, and our strategic planning was with Mr. Paul Meyer, and he echoed these sentiments as well. I think the board was kind of shocked to see the progress that we'd made in such a short period of time. We set out goals at our last strategic planning session in September, and to see those quantified and laid out, and we were able to check those blocks on all of the things that were accomplished. And I know I said it at the last meeting. You guys don't see a lot of the changes that are made, because they had to be made internally. We had to fix the foundation, so there was a lot of internal changes that were made. But now we are on a very, very direct path to seeing some real growth happen in our town. And again, this is for your information, for you to look at, and then come back to us at our work session in two weeks with your suggestions, your feedback. We like this, we don't like this, we want more of this and less of that. So please, get involved. Tell your neighbors, anybody. If they are a resident of Spring Lake, please get them involved. We are a community, and it's, it's not just up to us. We want to be an accurate representation, and we can't represent you accurately if we don't hear from you. So I will open this up to the board for any, anything else, if you wanted to add anything to that. Awesome. So next week, you guys got homework. For two weeks, homework. Come back after you read through it. It's only two short pages. It's not a lot of reading. It's like a page and a half, actually. But please, and if you do not have a copy of this, it was emailed out to the Sunshine List in the agenda packet. If you'd like another copy, or if you need a copy, please reach out to Ms. Carly, and she can email or print a copy for you. All right. And now we'll move on to 8C, Discussion of Town Cut Positions. I would like to ask our HR Director, Mr. Terry Hock, to please come to the podium.
Hi, Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, Board Members. Okay, so here we have a list of a couple of, can you hear? Couple of key positions that were cut or eliminated from the budget. First, we'll start with the Inspection Department. First position being the Code Enforcement Officer. That position was cut on July first of 2021. You can see there are three of the positions, which is a fifty-eight, the range is forty thousand to sixty thousand. The incumbent at the time was making forty-five thousand, two fifty-two. We have the employer fringes, such as your reflector, Medicare Retirement Medical Insurance, eye insurance, vision insurance, excuse me, Delta Dental, and life insurance, for a total cost of sixty-six thousand, three forty-five ninety. Next, also, the Inspection Supervisor. That position was eliminated July first of 2022. You can see there the salary range, the incumbent was actually making seventy-one thousand, six ninety-eight. And also go through all the fringes for a total of ninety-nine thousand, nine thirteen fifty-eight, for a cost up to the town. November of 2021, the Battalion Chief was promoted to Assistant Fire Chief, but those duties were combined. Let's see, July first of 2022, the Police Department, a lieutenant position, an administrative lieutenant position was eliminated. That person was making fifty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars a year, for a total cost of seventy-eight thousand, eight fourteen thirty-seven. Okay, July first, 2021, we also lost a meter reader. Up to that point, we had three full-time meter readers. We went down to two. And that created a big problem, because those meter readers were just overworked. It was ridiculous. We started seeing increased absences. So that's kind of a small position as far as pay, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, for a supposed reduction of forty-four thousand, four sixty-six ninety-six. Okay, now we'll move on to the Finance Department. So we lost the Finance Director and Accounts Payable Position, April twenty-sixth of 2021. The Finance Director at the time was earning a total of seventy-one thousand dollars a year, with fringes, ninety-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars and ten cents. The Accounts Payable Person at that time was earning forty-three thousand, nine ninety-two, with salary and fringes, we're looking at sixty-four thousand, seven forty-six eighty-nine. Notice I really didn't put a total on here for savings, we're really not saving this amount of money, because some of these positions are contracted out. But the total of this list is five hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Can you say that again?
Five hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. That, that figure's misleading, because some of these positions are contracted out, such as the Code Enforcement Officer, and also the Building Inspector. That position is contracted out.
Do you know how much we're paying for our code enforcement that we're contracted?
That, that would be a contract, so we'd have to get with the town clerk and pull that information. I don't have access to that.
We're at seventy-two. Seventy-three, seventy-three dollars for an hour for inspection.
For inspection, seventy-three dollars an hour, wow.
Seventy-three, I just need you to hear, and this is, this is not, we didn't set these, these schedules or these, these prices, so I wanted to go on record. We are now, we cut the inspection position, and we're now paying seventy-three dollars an hour for contracted, one.
Wow. Wow.
He's up to how many times a week now?
He comes twice.
Twice a week? Only in, once in the morning, then once in the afternoon.
So that's the Code Enforcement Officer?
Yes.
We also have inspections, which is, and that's contracted out as well.
We don't practice a contract?
And we're also behind on business inspections because of.
Several.
That's correct.
Can you say that in the mic, just so we can make sure everybody heard it?
Yeah, the inspector that we do have, he doesn't come till after four o'clock. So any business that wants to be inspected or wants any kind of finals, they can't get it till after four o'clock, so it puts us behind the curve a little bit.
And then there's Finance Director and Accounts Payable, which is like, those two positions, it really should be one other position, correct?
We usually have Finance Director and two AP clerks?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, but we are currently paying, we haven't even made it to the full year, and we've paid the contracts that, who's the total here? Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I think it was?
Yes, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, thirty-six.
Can you please say that number one more time slowly, so we can hear how much we are paying for our finance staff?
Oof, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
And we haven't even made it to the full year, but we're supposed to be a distressed community.
Right.
And mind you, these, the contracted, contracted staff is selected by the LGC. We do not have any say. I've asked about, you know, the, how much we're paying for these positions, and the answer was, I don't know. And again, as Alderwoman Cooper said, we are a distressed, financially distressed community. So to pay such exorbitant amounts for positions that were filled by the LGC or contracted through the LGC, to me, is mind-boggling.
Absolutely. And Ms. Cooper, the correction, we have one full-time Accounts Payable position, but the LGC has two people back there supposedly doing Accounts Payable, and also the, the lead person working on Accounts Payable. So we have three positions working on Accounts Payable. There seems like a, some waste to me there.
I agree.
Okay, let's go back to the meter reader, okay? I'm trying to get off that phone. The meter reader, we're really not experiencing that forty-four thousand dollar savings, because we got two part-time people covering that position now. It's just too much for two full-time meter readers to handle.
Too much for one full-time meter reader? And we have two part-time?
We have, so right now, we have two full-time and two part-time.
Okay. So I did want to just point out that the accounts that are being paid at a hundred dollars an hour, seventy-five dollars an hour, and sixty-five dollars an hour. I did want to make that public. Those are the prices we're paying. And we've asked for, I mean, Accounts Payable, probably usually, what about twenty-something an hour normally?
I heard about that. The last full-time position, we had paid forty-three thousand a year.
Okay.
The salary range is thirty-three thousand to forty-nine thousand.
Okay, yeah.
And those, those, those figures are from Greg Isley. We had a temporary AP clerk in the position before, through Robert Half, charged less than thirty dollars an hour. So once that position left, somehow it got transferred to Greg Isley. Now you're paying sixty-five dollars an hour.
Wow.
Just for the sake of transparency, I'd like to make sure we know how much we've paid, total? That's, that's for the, that's not for the whole year, though. So we, we're not fit through the whole year here.
No.
So we're paying anywhere between, you know, fifty-one and, and seventy-five thousand dollars a month. A month, sum up to eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars a month for our finance staff. Just want to make sure we have that on record. Mr. Hock?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Board, do you have any questions? Comments? Alden Plasios?
Thank you, Mayor. In some of these documents, I've just had a chance to review tonight, because we didn't have this before.
Right.
But other than the hourly wage we're paying, we're also paying for mileage, for meals, hotel expenses, for Greg Isley.
Wow.
Now, when the Audit Committee, which is myself, Mayor Anthony, and Alderwoman Cooper, get together, we originally started meeting as a result of the investigative audit done by the state auditor last year, completed rather, by the state auditor last year. And the point was to kind of combat a lot of the actions that were cited against the town and the way the town was running. And since then, while we've kind of overcome a lot of those things, we kind of shifted recently to our budget. And so the purpose of us meeting now is to look over the budget and scrutinize it and see where we're at and how we can save the town more money, right? We need to restore our savings balance for the town. And while we're reviewing expenses, expenditures, encumbrances, we're finding line items that need, really need explanation. And so one of the key topics that the, that David Irwin with the LGC had presented to the board was that some of those line items were as cited in the budget now as LGC memo. And so there's more clarification we need on that, but what it looks like is that money is being funneled out of department budgets and into paying Greg Isley. So that's more information we're needing from David Irwin and the LGC. We need those explanations. So just to, for transparency reasons, wanted to share that information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All right, we will continue on with Agenda Item 8D, eleven twelve North Bragg Boulevard Encroachment Exhibit, Mr. Williams.
Yes, what you have before you is the business there at eleven twelve is wanting to upgrade and bringing something in. But the, that is a street, a, a town road that's right there next to it, New Street. And I guess over the time of us doing what we did, we've kind of encroached in his land. We actually sent this to the attorney, talking, the best way to do it. To us, what we have to give you guys, knowledge is just basically cut, go in and cut the street off back where it goes, take it out, and give it back to them would probably be the easiest thing we figured to do.
Yeah, yeah, basically, your two options. They want to, I think they suggested giving an easement as well. Of course, that would require, you know.
Yeah, that's a lot.
So and I'm not forgetting for all the survey. I think the easiest thing is, I don't know how much it costs to cut it out.
Yeah, that could be our guys. We could, we could, I could, the town, the people we have, the streets, cut that off, make it where it's supposed to be, get it up, clean it up for them, and give it back to them. It would probably be the easiest thing. I think it's just over time, it just kept growing and growing and growing, and not knowing it, that these people here really want to bring something in to, to bring, you know, revenue to the town, so we need to do what we need to, like I.
Do you need anything from us?
I think I just need which way we want to go with that. Do we want to just cut it out and go? Or do we want to go get ahold of him and make him to call somebody else to do a bunch of attorney thing?
Do you want an easement, or do you want to rip it out?
Yeah.
Uh, Tim, will this be in the area?
Uh, no, you don't have to do it.
Okay.
It's not, it is, it's in streets.
It's in streets?
It's in streets. The easiest thing to do, in my opinion, is just let's cut it out and give it back to them. Save us some money.
Alden, last one?
Thank you, Mayor. As we go through here, the, the discussion part of it was the easement. And, you know, as a, as a town, and then also as the resident there, to voluntarily to give that to the town, that's one thing. But for us to be good stewards and, and part of the town, we should definitely clean that up, and we should return that back to the rightful property owner. That, that was our mistake, and, and so for us, we, we should make it right and, and give that back to them.
That's, that's kind of how.
Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion on that, Alderwoman Cooper? Are you guys in favor of that?
In favor.
General consensus is to go ahead, give them that, that piece of land back after we clean it.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to agenda item eight E, Spring Lake Military Veterans Advisory Committee for removal request. Mr., or excuse me, Alden Lachman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, over this past time, we've had another member of the Military Veterans Affairs that did a voluntary removal. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Wanda Burst for her time as, as part of the committee. Uh, that, that does leave an opening into the Military Veterans Affairs. And so as we go forward here, Mr. Williams, I'll get with you here to, to put something out on the town website, uh, that Spring Lake is a military community here. And we do have five, and we call them VSOs, Veteran Service Organizations here in Spring Lake, that we want to, to reengage with those organizations so that they, they feel part of the community here and support the veterans and, and the military members here in Spring Lake. So we do have some openings and, and we'd love to have members of the general community or these veteran service organizations come back to the table and help support the veterans here.
Is there any discussion?
How many openings do you have?
Currently, we have two.
Alderwoman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. So is this, um, um, this is, uh, was this like something that you all have to vote to accept or is it, I just, um, it's moved back to something like what happened with the appearance committee?
So with the members of, of the Military Veterans Affairs, they are appointed by the board.
Right.
And so in order to, to be properly removed from the, it comes back before the board to, to have them just, just cleared of, of any duties that they were associated with the committee.
But let's be clear, this isn't a removal, this was a resignation. She, she voluntarily, uh, no hard feelings, she voluntarily resigned and, and thanked, uh, the town for having her and she was very excited for the time that she was able to serve.
Right, so I'm just saying, uh, we can remove people, but do, do, do we have to let this go before the, the military, um, committee, before it comes to us or we can just accept it?
Has the committee seen this?
The committee is aware of this, I, I talked to the chairs today.
Okay.
But the, the remove, she did send in her resignation.
Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Burst, for your service to the Military and Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee. Uh, we really appreciate you, wish you well in any further endeavors. Do we have anything else, Alden Plasios?
I think we have to make a motion on that, right?
Not for, not for resignation. You shouldn't have to, no, she, we're not removing her, she resigned.
Okay.
So approval now on here is wrong, okay.
All right, we'll now move on to eight F, Alden Plasios.
I have a follow-up question, did we, we did make a motion on the last removals, did we?
I don't know, we'd have to check the.
Those were removals, they weren't resignations.
Yeah, some were resignations though.
Did you get a resignation?
There were two.
We, we had two removals and we had two resignations, so it was a total of four.
Right, so I, for the removals, definitely, we have to vote to remove, but a res, it's a voluntary committee. Uh, so to, for them to resign, we can't do anything about that. Now what we can do is table it and look a little further into it just to make sure we're doing it the correct way and bring it back, um, for next meeting, just so we're all a little clear. Are you, I'll, I'll entertain a motion?
That's it.
For table.
Oh, so we're gonna, we're gonna look to table it and bring it back next week?
If necessary.
Uh-huh, and if, and if not, we just only have to bring it back. Oh, sorry, Alderwoman Cooper.
So I make a motion to table, um, eight C, uh, and bring it back at the next meeting for clarity.
What's that?
E.
Eight E.
Okay. Is there a second? Alden Plasios?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, now we'll move on to eight F, meeting structure, Alden Plasios.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, July eleventh of twenty twenty-two, we all agreed that we would have one meeting a month that would be a regular meeting and then one meeting a month that would be a work session meeting. So the difference was that in a regular meeting, that's where we take all our action. But in a work session meeting, that's where we would hear presentations, have discussions. And it wasn't long after that that we reverted back to kinda just, uh, combining the two and, and going about it that way. So, um, I wanted to bring it before the board again because I wanted to see if we were interested in revisiting that. Only because our time is valuable and the work of the town is necessary. And if we had that structure, I feel like it would, one, save a little time and, two, help us prepare for these meetings a little bit better. Um, but I wanted to bring that back because tonight we had three presentations that took a lot of time. And last meeting, we had three presentations that take a lot of time. Not saying they're not relevant, I'm just saying that the time factor is a big factor. And so do we wanna move these to one meeting as we originally approved back in July, or do we wanna leave them as is? The second part of this to get you to dwell on is I was wondering, because I don't know, um, and maybe the public doesn't know, but is there a vetting process for people or organizations that wanna present to our board? Do people just say, I wanna present, we let them through, or is it, do they go to a board member and the board member approves it? What's the vetting, if any, process that we have right now for people who want, wanna do presentations?
So, yeah, I'll go to the first one for, about the, the meeting structure, so, um, it was, work set, regular meetings are for presentations or any action taken. Work session is to discuss whatever presentations or any actions or anything we want to kinda pick apart. So that's what our work sessions are for, with the exception of the LGC doing their presentation. Um, that was, should have been the only work session presentation, that's scheduling, it was scheduling with them, for them to be, um, at the, the work session meeting. Um, and you're absolutely right, we have to be a bit more careful adding presentations to, uh, our work session because that's what we should be discussing, whatever, um, decisions or actions we want to carry out or any, um, presentations or things that came before us before. Uh, so I, you're, you're right, absolutely right, we've kinda gotten away from it, but it's honestly because we, we get bombarded with presentations because Spring Lake is right now ripe and everybody wants to get apart, they want a piece of it. And so it's, can we come, can we come, can we come, and instead of pushing people out months, we're trying to get at least a bulk of them out of the way and then we can kind of slow down because we are, when I, Carly, how far have we moved already? So there's a lot, uh, Spring Lake is getting a lot of attention right now, a lot of attention. And it's great attention, um, because we lack a lot of resources, um, and we need this. And I'm, sometimes it's gonna take us a little longer to be in these meetings, uh, but there's a lot of work to be done. And eventually, once we get, we're gonna get to a place to where we're gonna have a bit more structure. We just gotta, you know, tough it out a little bit right now, but I agree, let's try to tailor our work session a bit more to working versus, you know, receiving information. Alderwoman Cooper?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with, um, Alden Plasios. I think we have to go back to strictly work session and strictly, uh, business. And I think that one needs to apply for everybody, even, you know, if, if it's the LGC, we tell them this is this, and we have to stand on that. Um, and I also think maybe there's a way we can vet presentations by asking them to send what they want to present?
They have to.
No, I'm saying, well before we have a meeting, so we can see if it even work, if we think it's, even if we, if we think it's a good fit, maybe we need a, a small committee to, um, vet that.
So we did, we had the agenda set in, we used to do, uh, an agenda prep.
Yeah.
However, when we went through the manager transition, we kinda had to, you know, adjust and those kinda fell by the wayside. We can, well now that we've got a bit more, you know, consistency in place, we can bring those back. And that way, um, those presentations are vetted before, uh, the agenda prep committee and we'll know if we wanna go ahead and move forward that. A lot of the presentations that come through us, that's, that's not, you can't do that, no, you know, that's, I mean, we get, we get everything from, you know, I wanna come and talk about how I can sell you my Avon to, I mean, all kinds of things. I'm trying to vet as much as I can, but if we can get back to, um, doing the, the agenda prep, um, that, that will definitely help, that way we can get a bit more structure, more eyes on the vetting process, um, to see if we, if we need it for the, for the community. And the, um, Alden Lachman, I had a thought and it just left me.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and when we started, that was one of the things that the town manager did. That, that was put on, on the town, the interim town manager at that time was to vet this process so that the best product came before the board, so that it wasn't a, a simple, uh, opportunity for people to come up here and speak, but for the betterment of the town. And, and so that's something that the vetting process should include the, the town manager.
Absolutely. That, that was a part of, but this is when Mr. Durham was here, um, and we met every Tuesday, uh, before the, the agenda went out to the public to make sure everything was good, uh, and go through the process of, of who's going to make the agenda or not. So, um, let's, let's try to bring that back. It may take us, you know, a few weeks because we're still getting some things here, but agenda prep will go back, um, into effect. That way we can get a bit more control on, on the meetings. Great catch, Alden Plasios. We're supposed to catch things, but this is proactive instead of reactive. Are we good, do we have any other discussion on that? Mr. Manager, are you open to that?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, we will now go to agenda item eight G. We're almost done, guys, we're almost done, and I promise I only have a few mayor updates this time. So, uh, in, uh, all of the things that was happening last month, I forgot to announce the February birthdays and so I'm so sorry, uh, February folks, that I missed you, but happy belated birthday to Steve Wing, uh, Jackson Pruitt, Sam Williams, uh, Laquavia Stevens, Benjamin Prince, Kevin McIver, and Michael Moore. So you guys get more birthdays, because there's more for March, every month there's a birthday. Uh, so, um, very, very, very important meeting coming up at the end of this month. The Mayor's Coalition will be hosting our quarterly meeting right here in the boardroom. They made a special, or we, we worked together to move this meeting forward, um, so that we have time to discuss the upcoming, uh, sales tax change through the county. So if you want to have your voice heard, if you want to make sure that you are a part of the, the, not really the decision-making, but at least having your voices heard, uh, by those who are making this decision, um, come and express your concerns about, uh, the one point four million dollars, uh, that Spring Lake stands to lose with this switch. Um, but please, again, we can't make change without you. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your church members, this is definitely a time to come out, um, in numbers to discuss this initiative that, um, stands to hurt Spring Lake, uh, pretty badly. So again, that is May, uh, third, or excuse me, March thirty-first at eight AM, right here, um, in the boardroom. And so just, we are continuing to train, um, as much as possible. Last week I had a chance to, um, spend my weekend in Raleigh at the Progressive Governance Academy. We did a lot of work about, you know, leadership styles, uh, mental health, um, and well-being while you're in this position. Um, and so that was a great time to really go and sit amongst other local elected officials from across the nation. Um, and elected officials from every capacity, we had school board, we had water and soil, uh, concert, we had all kinds of elected officials. Um, so it was really, a, really good opportunity to really see the diversity, um, in governance, but see the commonality in the challenges that we face as elected officials. And tomorrow I am off to the Main Street Conference in Statesfield. Main Street is, uh, is very, very close to all of our board members' heart and so we are making sure that we're taking the steps so that we can properly rebuild and revitalize Main Street. So I'll, uh, be back with some great, hopefully some great initiatives, um, and ideas that we can use to transform and revitalize Main Street. And that is all I have. Uh, Mayor Proton?
Okay, I just wanna talk about real briefly, um, as you know, there's a teacher shortage and this is for anybody that may have a senior that wants a career in education. So CCS has a great program that they're offering to seniors where they can, um, they have a program where they can come and become teachers and they have to commit three years and they also get a sign bonus, but it's an awesome program. Uh, I forgot my notes, so sorry, but, um, check out CCS website, of course I'm an educator and so, but if you have a child that's a senior and they're interested in a teaching career, please have them look into that because it's a very good program.
Alden Plasios?
Thank you, Mayor. The Appearance Committee, uh, their next meeting is April twelfth, and they have three great initiatives they're working on. Uh, we'll add it for, one is the Yard of the Month. Uh, the second is the mural campaign, uh, for downtown Main Street. The third is repackaging of the Adopt a Street program. And the fourth is, to be determined, I can't figure it out right now, so I apologize. Yeah, so April twelfth is the next meeting, uh, if anyone has any questions, they can see myself or, uh, Ms. Frederica Sutherland, who is the chair of the committee, who she's, uh, in attendance tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderwoman Plasios?
Um, yes, on the twenty-third of March at six PM, right here in the conference room, we're having a community meeting with the police. So if you're interested, please go. That's all I have.
Alden Lachman?
Mayor, I'm gonna keep this brief, I've got three things. One, the cleanup that we did, that was along eighty-seven, across the Deerfield, all the way to the Circuit K and IHOP, uh, a hundred fifty pounds of trash was collected at that time. We had two volunteers that came and helped, Adrian and Karen P U P O. They're, uh, students at Cross Creek Early College High School that came and helped clean up during that time. Mr. Town Manager, interim town manager, I'd like to, to have you pass along to Steve Wing and, and the group that, there's been lots of chatter, lots of comments in regards to, to people cleaning up, uh, town employees out there doing things. So, uh, it has really caught on, it's really, really working. So please tell Steve and his entire staff that residents, people driving through are noticing the changes that are taking place. Military Veterans Affairs as well, we've got some openings, we're, we're a military community here. We'd love to get some more people back in this so that we can go forward with this. And, and Mayor, I can't stress enough, you said March thirty-first, eight AM, it's a Friday. Tell your friends, tell your folks to come out here at Friday, March thirty-first, eight AM. Your voices need to be heard, I, I've made mine very clear in regards to this, it's time for you all to, to let your voices be heard. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Absolutely, and I, I just need to second that, uh, trash cleanup, I was heading to Raleigh right when they were out cleaning up and to see it going out versus coming back, it, it's almost shocking. Because after seeing that, because that berm is, it's pretty trashy most days. Um, so to see that difference, it was like night and day, it was shocking, so thank you so much, that was phenomenal, phenomenal.
Alden Lachman? Thank you, Mayor. I also do wanna highlight the topics and conversations, because we had a really good time at Ruby Tuesdays and we had great conversations, so if you want to let you gentlemen know what you wanna see in your police force, this is the place to be on March twenty-third at six PM, right here in the boardroom. Um, also, I did want to mention, um, there is a citizen from Fayetteville who is posting out on social media that we are discussing a tax increase. We've not had any discussions about a tax increase, uh, due to, um, the, um, the tax, sales tax, um, change. And also I wanted to let my board members know that the North Carolina League of Municipalities, uh, the City Vision Conference is April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh in Concord, North Carolina. They're gonna let you all drive a race car if you come. They're gonna let you all drive a race car if you come. But they, uh, they are also open if you want to nominate somebody for the Board of Directors. There are several positions open. Um, you can have up to two people from your town serve on the board. So, I'm not ready, I'm not up for reelection. I do serve on the Board of Directors, but I'm not up for reelection until next year. Uh, our terms are two years unless it's a presidential appointment and that's only one year. So, um, go to the North Carolina League Municipalities website and check it out. You also want to, um, see who is running for the, the different positions. I am our voting delegate, uh, this year to get one vote for town. So, uh, please check that out.
Mr. Manager? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Alderman Placios?
Sorry, Mayor. I remember what the fourth thing was. Earth Day Cleanup. So spring cleanup is going to be April 22nd, Earth Day, uh, here at Town Hall, or I'm sorry, at the Rec Center at 9:00 a.m. So I'll remind you again, Alderwoman Thompson also wanted me to let you know that the torch run is scheduled for April 29th. So if you want to go ahead and start, uh, training for that, right? All right.
Get your T-shirts. Don't forget to get your T-shirts. Is there a website or do we have to go to the police station? So I'm... You're putting extra stipulations in there.
I understand you'll drive us through the process.
Thank you. Awesome. Mr. Manager?
Uh, the only thing I have is two things. It's, it's great to see the citizens come out. I mean, it's really, it's really good. It seems like every week we're adding a couple of people in there, so it's, it's good. Maybe we'll fill it up pretty soon. Bring your neighbor or somebody next time. This is where you're gonna get the information from. It's not gonna be from the internet, it's not gonna be from the news. It's gonna be from up here. You're gonna hear it firsthand. So that's always good to hear. And you can ask those questions too. So it's always important you do that. Uh, second is the employees we have. I mean, I really appreciate what they have been doing. They've been really, uh, working their tail off out there to, to do everything from police to, to water to cleanups. I mean, everybody has really been working hard. So I really appreciate what they've done and, uh, gonna make this town look a lot better and, and function better. So I want to thank them for that.
Awesome. Can we give our employees a round of applause? Thank you, Mayor. That was good. I like that extra clap. Mr. Porter?
Uh, just briefly, I just want to let the mayor and all of them know the Cumberland County Bar Association is having a bar gala on March 31st, I believe. So certainly you all are invited to that. Just let me know and we can talk about giving you some tickets. It is always fun, sometimes a little too much fun. But, uh, what I'll say is in all seriousness, uh, that's a very good opportunity for you to meet all of your District Court and Superior Board Judges. I know a lot of you, many of them. That actually is a fairly big group, especially the District Court, uh, which is fairly large. Uh, as well as the prosecutors, uh, that you rely on, the public defenders that then defend those people. And then the private bar, um, you know, Spring Lake doesn't have a huge private bar. I'm talking about attorneys. There will also be an actual... But it, it is a really nice opportunity to meet everybody with, uh, you know, everybody's letting their hair down and having a good time. And then many of the attorneys that are there, uh, serve in elected roles as well, like Commissioner Adams and, uh, some of the other commissioners and aldermen and councilmembers for all these little municipalities throughout Cumberland County are, are also attorneys. And there's also a lot of law enforcement there, other dignitaries. So I just want to let you know, the theme is Caribbean Nights.
Adam Clark, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
Awesome. Well, I will now entertain a motion for us to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6 personnel and 14331811A3 attorney-client privileges. Alderman Placios?
So moved.
Second, Alderwoman Cooper?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all for coming out. Motion carries. Have a great, great night.
Thank you. I'll see you back there.
Hey, Mr. Chief, stop seeing you back there.